Call the meeting to order. Diane, could you do the roll call, please?
Mayor Scoob is absent this evening. Vice Mayor Anderson.
Here.
Councilmember Grossman.
I'm here.
Councilmember Ny.
Present.
Councilmember Whiting.
Here.
Councilmember Rooney.
She's here.
And I understand that Councilmember Mallory will be a few minutes late, but we do expect her.
Correct.
We do have a quorum.
Thank you. Okay. Tonight will be our discussion of proposed 2017-18 budget, and we'll begin with the general overview. Bill and Larry.
Bill and Larry Show, okay. Mayor and council, this evening is another of the milestones that we have in our budget process, and just to quickly go through it, as you will recall, back in November, we had our first step, which was a council retreat where you had indicated the types of things that you were interested in seeing. We then had added a new step, which was going out to the community rather than hosting a budget meeting at Town Hall on a given Saturday or Tuesday or whatever. We scheduled meetings at community centers around Prescott Valley where the department heads went out and asked for input from our citizens to see what input we could get as we were working on budget building. After the conclusion of that, we had our second council retreat where you heard from department heads based on the first meeting as well as public input. You heard department heads talk about what they would like to accomplish within the resources that were available. And then from there, Bill and his team did the hard work of starting to compile revenue projections as well as potential expenditures. Now, having said that, let me go ahead and give a brief recap on the year that we're presently in, 1617. This has been a remarkable year, remarkable on many different levels, but most importantly, in my view, is that you, as the mayor and elected officials, have stayed in touch with and have done an outstanding job of getting input from the citizens. And you have gone ahead and worked with the citizenry and have represented them well. And those are not hollow statements. We had an election. And during that election, where there were a number of people that were running for Town Council, all of the incumbents that were in that race were reelected in the primary. Okay? That says a lot because without you staying connected and representing the communities very well, that would not have happened. And although, and as in any election, there are a number of issues raised, and that's good. That's our democratic process. But I would like to believe, and I think that has been stated very clearly, that the reelection of policymakers in our community bodes well for the way the community feels that you are handling their resources and providing services. And that's in light of the fact that you went forward and raised our number-one source of revenue, our sales tax, by half a cent prior to the election. Okay? You also helped supervise the expenditure of the proceeds from that half cent, and you noticed that it was all put to work exactly where you had represented it needed to go, i.e., street maintenance, two-thirds of that, and then public safety, one-third of those proceeds. And so with that in mind, 1617 has been a great year, and it's coming to a close in another two and a half months. And, you know, it really has been a banner year in the history of the town of Prescott Valley. And what we are presenting tonight, along, and done primarily by Bill and his team, we believe represents what you told us you wanted to see in the new year. We have put it down black-on-white, and we're looking to go forward. You will see on page 15 of your budget book, a listing, and I will spare you going through those item by item, but you will see nine particular issues that have been addressed, and they were major goals that you identified in the budget process. Number one is putting continued funds into our reserves so that we stay financially sound for the next downturn in the economy, whenever that may happen, but at least you will be prepared. And then you have eight other points that have been made by you, and we've built the budget around those concepts. You'll also see in the next page, 16, a department-by-department set of highlights, sparing you the details of buying pencils and paper clips. These are the highlights. These are the things that advance the broad goals that you have stated and laid out for staff. And with that in mind, I really do believe that Bill and his team, who are identified on page 17, merit all kinds of kudos, meaning Lee Albritton, Lisa Simrak, Irina, and Katie, and even Bill. He did some of the work, okay? But they all have done an outstanding job. And, and take note, Bill did something that he hasn't done in a long time, and that's revisit the format of your budget book. And I would submit to you that the beginning of the book, going through sections 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, are very much more user-friendly, much more readable, and much, much more directed towards people that are not accountants for a living. And I think that you'll find the illustrations associated with it to be very friendly. And so hats off to Bill. He was the one that took that bull by the horn and has done a great job. So with that, I'm going to shut up and let Bill carry the forward.
Thank you, Larry. Vice Mayor, councilmembers. Before I start, I mean, I'll give you just a very brief overview of the, I don't know, 500-plus-page document you have in front of you. But I do want to also thank all the department heads and their staff for all the way, the work, hard work they did in preparing this budget. But as Larry does stated, I have four great people that work in my department that just did an amazing job this year. You know, Lisa, for whatever reason, she's back here. She's decided to kind of come through and put up, you know, listen to me for another half hour or whatever. She listens to me all day, and I'm a-
That is painful.
That is painful, and I commend her for that. But also Lee and then Irina, they really went, they took the task to heart about revamping chapters 1 through 4, and then Irina also did the debt service section in chapter 8. And I think it does flow better. Lee also decided to kind of spruce it up a little bit. We add pictures. Instead of having this page intentionally left blank, you'll see a bunch of pictures that reflected a town throughout different times of the year, which I think is a nice little added feature for the budget book also. So with that, I do want to point out that this is a draft. So, you know, over the next two nights, you'll hear various department heads talk about their budgets. Anything that you feel is necessary to change, even though my staff will basically cry if any changes to the budget book are made at this point, but, you know, we will go ahead and make those changes. We will incorporate those changes into the tentative budget, which will be in two weeks. That will come before you and talk to you about the tentative budget. So, again, this is a draft. This is our first, you know, we assembled all the information. We put the information in a document for you to review, but again, it's a working draft for you. So with that, I'll try to go through this as quickly as possible. If you have any questions. Technology nowadays. All right. Old-fashioned way. All right. There you go. The first slide shows total expenditures by category. As you can see in the bottom line there, total, our total proposed budget for the upcoming fiscal year is $93,965,872. And you can see in brackets what was proposed last year of $82,216,000. So that represents a 14.3% increase over the previous year. Again, this graph is on, in chapter 4, page 2. This is the same graph that I'll be talking about. I have a separate slide for personnel, so I'm just going to hit briefly that basically it's gone up by 7.3% over the previous year, $1.4 million. There's various reasons for that, which I can go into in a little while. Operating expenditures, basically that's what most of the department heads will be here tonight and tomorrow night to talk about their operating budget, so I'll kind of leave that up to them to explain, you know, how they're going to spend the money, where it's going, where it's going to go, what the changes are going to be, and things like that. The other major change that occurred this year is in capital. You can see over in the lower-left corner, it's $27.5 million. Last year was $19.2. Again, we budget for things. Sometimes they happen, sometimes they don't. We have, we have it budgeted for expenditure control purposes, but this year, we have a lot of large projects. You know, the fixing the library is $3.5 million. We have a lot of street projects that Norm should, will be addressing tonight that equals $6, $7, $8 million of street projects. So there's a lot of capital projects, just large capital projects this year, and it's spread throughout the entire budget. It's not just the general fund, or it's just not the third of a cent. It's a spread out through the entire, entire budget. Most of the other categories, other, you know, other, I hate really even talking about other for the most part because it's basically depreciation that we budget for within the enterprise fund. Depreciation's a non, it's a, it's not a cash transaction, but it's something that we have to budget for, and so, but that's where, that's $5 million seems like a lot, but when you have the type of assets we have in the utility system, $5 million a year in depreciation really isn't that much. Debt service changed by, I think, $4,000 over the last year. So our debt service is pretty level at this point. It will fluctuate from time to time, but overall, it's pretty level. Then transfers out, that's, went up by a half a million dollars. That's basically how we move money from one fund. If we want, like, we have our $2 million we'll be transferring to, from the general fund to HERF. That's how we use it. We transfer, we use transfer in, transfer out. So it's just a way of moving cash from one fund to another. Now, this slide shows expenditures by fund. Same dollar amount, $93.9 million, almost $94 million proposed budget this year. You can see it's general fund as 43%, almost thirty, well, over $39 million. There's basically four funds that really reflect the majority of the increase of the $11 million. General fund, one of them I just mentioned, which would be the building, repairing the library. We budgeted $3.5 million for that in the general fund. Some of the other items is we increased our fringe benefits. And again, I'll talk in a little bit more detail, but as it relates to public safety, we have money budgeted for that. And then the other part is our developer reimbursements. So whenever we see increases in sales tax, you're going to see increases in developer reimbursements. We have contractual obligations that we have to kind of account for and budget for, and so whenever, you know, we need, if an area, you know, a new rest or new restaurant or business goes into one of those defined boundaries and they open up a business, we have to reimburse a certain portion of the sales tax. The other area is capital improvements. That's a huge, we're seeing a huge increase in that budget this year. Again, that's a third of a cent. Majority of that is capital, again, which can be addressed. Norm can address in a little bit more detail. And then the other area is water, which also includes water capacity fund. Most of it's capital. There's about $2.2 million increase over the previous year. Most of it's capital. But also, part of it is we've increased the butter, budget for meter replacement. So we're hoping over the next, you know, Neil, if Neil was here, he would like to get it all done this year. But we're hoping over the next couple of years, we're going to replace all of our water meters with electronic meters so that, that way, we don't even need anyone going out reading the meter anymore. We can just, we have the towers in place. We read the information when necessary, and we produce a bill. So in theory, it should be really nice. How it actually works day-to-day, you know, it's yet to be determined yet, so we'll see. This one, I'll just kind of touch this real quick. Again, this is, I have five years of actuals, and then budget and proposed. 1112 is a little bit, I guess, a little misleading because, I mean, it's what actually happened, but it's distorted because of the fact we went out and issued debt. And so that's why you see kind of that burnt orange color, whatever the color that is, but it, it was because we went out and issued debt. So it kind of pushes that one off, and it makes it look like we spent a whole lot of money, but there was a purpose behind that. If you take that one, that part of it out, you would see kind of a steady trend of upward, you know, budgeting expenditures, actual expenditures, but also our budgeting. We increase our budget at an average of approximately 3.6 a year. So over the last six years, an average was about 4%. You've seen an increase in our total budget. This slide here kind of shows a couple of different pieces of information. The blue, excuse me, the blue is salaries, wages, and just salaries and wages. So regular wages, overtime, things like that. The red color is benefits. So that would include health insurance, dental insurance, any of our retirement plans for not only employees but public safety. So as you can see, and then the green line is the actual number of full-time equivalents that we have. So as you can see, the costs have increased over the past, you know, there's five years of actual and then our two budget years. So, and it's, we'll see an increase this year over previous years. So it's going to, you're going to still see that upward trend. Now, the point I do want to make, I guess, is that in the current or upcoming fiscal year, 1718, we're looking at approximately a half a million dollar increase in salaries over the previous budget year. And part of that is we're budgeting a 2% general wage increase, or COLA, whatever you want to call it, that'll go into effect mid-July. We're budgeting a 3% merit increase. So depending on how each individual does within the town, they have up to 4%, but I'm budgeting a 3% merit increase. And the other thing is in the new positions. So you can see, we've, we're only adding basically three positions this year compared to previous year. So it's, it's a relatively minor increase, especially if you look at the previous year when we added a lot more police department. So this one is Diane will talk about her part-time person she's adding, and, you know, there's just a few positions we're adding throughout the department. But those three main items will reflect our basic, our half a million dollar increase in salaries. Now, the red, even though it's hard to see, but actually, we're showing a million dollar increase in benefits. There's two main reasons for that. One is that the public safety contribution rate went up 30% again over the previous year. So until the unfunded liability, I guess, becomes more stable, we're going to continuously see these large percentage increases to public safety. The other thing is that we're, we're going to try this year to pay down our unfunded liability. So we have an additional half a million dollars budgeted in public safety retirement system specifically for paying down our unfunded liability. Right now, it's at about $10.2 million. You know, it seems to increase every year regardless of what we seem to do. We're hoping at least this will slow that, that pain or that burden, and then actually maybe start bringing it down. But, you know, we got a long way to go before that unfunded liability is completely basically eliminated. And there's also been a lawsuit that was the hall lawsuit, which is also going to have an effect on us. So there's going to be some adjustments that will have to be taken into consideration. So I think you're going to see everyone's unfunded liability actually take a little bit of a spike again this year, go up because of this lawsuit. We don't know the dollar amount, and no one really knows exactly how bad it's going to hit each of the cities, but I anticipate that we will get hit a little bit here in the near future. This is capital allay. Again, we have approximately $27.5 million budgeted. It's broken down by fund. You can see special revenue has the largest amount at this point, over $10 million, and, you know, almost $6 million of it is in impact fees. We budget $3.6 million in grants. A lot of that is placeholder, placeholder money. We don't really anticipate getting grants, and the amount of $3.6 million would be nice, but we really don't anticipate getting that type of amount. But because of our expenditure control limitations and that, we have to budget for it. So if we receive it, at least we have the money in budgeted that we can spend it. So a lot of that is just some wishful thinking also on behalf of, you know, various departments, and, you know, including myself, that I put some money in there just in case someone forgets something. I have a half a million dollars budgeted in there just in case. So that's a large number that, you know, again, very seldom we ever spend. Capital improvement, again, I've touched on that numerous times. Well, you can see enterprise fund, which Neil can address tomorrow, over almost $6 million in enterprise fund, and there's various water, wastewater funds. Now, it's changed gears. All the exciting stuff's over, so now I'm going to talk revenues a little bit. So this is a slide shows revenues by category. Again, now, our proposed revenue budget for next fiscal year is $80,521,340 compared to $70,340 last year. So again, you can see it's a, you know, over $10 million increase. So our revenues are growing, that's for sure. And it's, you know, again, I'll talk in a little bit more detail about the sales tax and TPT and intergovernmental, so I won't hit those too much. But some of the other areas where the, where we've seen increases or we budgeted increases this year is bond proceeds. The bond proceeds, first time we've really went out and issued debt in a long time, new debt in a long time. This is $3 million. It might end up being a little bit more, but this is money that we're going to go out to the bond market, maybe, or private placement, we're not sure. But we're going to go for the, it's basically the police building expansion. So we are going to be issuing debt. It's going to be paid by impact fee collections. So it's supposed to have its own revenue stream, so as long as the public safety impact fees maintain a certain dollar amount, it'll be covered, the debt service will be, that will be used to pay the debt service. So that's what that represents. Now, the $8.3 million in miscellaneous, that includes $3.5 million for basically litigation recovery as it relates to the library building. We budget, we're budgeting $3.5 million as an expenditure. The offset is we hope to collect that $3.5 million from various parties to basically cover our expenditures. So I have to have $3.5 million in a revenue category somewhere. So we hope to collect that amount. If Ivan was here, I think, or I don't know, maybe Larry would want to add, but to some degree, I think they would tell you, you know, we are definitely going to try to go after the individuals necessary to try to get, to recoup as much of the money that we're paying out to fix the library.
Yeah, the lawsuit's already been filed against the architect and the contractor, and our history has been you'll get 85% to 90% recovery on something like this, and so that's, that's what we hope to get.
I think we have a couple of other questions, Laura.
You, you always project, you know, increased income. Are we on target with your projections?
Um, well, let's see.
You're always conservative, so I at least want to be on your target.
Well, depending on the categories, I have a slide on impact fees. I'll tell you there that I am, whatever I typically budget, I usually reduce it by 10%. So impact fees should be, what we collect should be more than what I'm budgeting on impact fees. I have a slide, I'll show you, talk to you in a minute, about sales tax collection. Right now, we are slightly ahead of our budget for TPT. Actually, we're a lot closer than I would, I feel comfortable. We're still ahead, but I'd like to be further ahead in actual collections and not be so close to my budget. So some of the other categories as it relates to intergovernmental revenues, you know, that's, that's pretty much from the state. So on overall, you know, I think our, we're pretty on target for most, and, you know, utilities, you would probably see that our budget will probably exceed our collections in utilities. So overall, I feel pretty good with our current budget.
That's a strong statement from you.
I know. It's getting bad.
Laura, he's, he's beating around the bush, putting it quite bluntly and simply. His projections for revenue are either on target or they're exceeding his projections. So in other words, his conservative bent continues to serve us well, and he just took 500 words to say that.
I heard you, Bill.
Bill?
It's unusually known to me to talk so much, but-
This, this might be a good time. There's always a question about terminology, and one of the, on this particular slide, you talk about draw on fund reserves. We might talk about what fund reserves actually are so that people don't mistake that with our cash, our rainy day fund.
Deficit spending is what was thrown at-
We've got to learn from last year.
Sure. And I actually have a, I've added a couple of slides to actually discuss and then point that out. But I was going to point out, as, as the previous slides show, we have $93.9, almost $94 million worth of budgeted expenditures. We have budget revenues of $80.5 million. So the difference is a $13.4 million. Now, depending on how you want to spin it, you can say it's deficit spending, you can say, you know, you can call it whatever you want, but there are specific purposes related to why this is occurring. And I hope that the slides at the end here will, will hopefully explain that. And if not, then I can answer some more questions that you might have.
That'll work. Okay.
I had a question. That is, we're anticipating that this particular budget year, we'll see a resolution to the library.
I hope so.
Will we just carry this on if it's extended through another couple of years?
I believe that you will see a resolution to a leaky roof and to the damage that a leaky roof has created. That will be accomplished this fiscal year. The resolution to the refunding of our advance will depend on whether mediation happens and happens successfully, or if it goes to a full lawsuit. If that's the case, we may not recover those funds for a couple, three years, depending on the court docket. Now, when we go out into the bond market or private placement to get the dollars to make these repairs, the cost of money will be added to the damages, as it should be. And we also are talking with our bond counsel about having an early call provision if it's, if it's bonds as opposed to private placement. So as soon as the lawsuit is settled, boom, we turn right around and pay it off, so.
This slide shows revenues by fund. Again, it just kind of breaks it down a little bit differently- Um, again, it just kind of breaks it down a little bit differently. You can see over 40, over 50% of the total revenues budgeted is, is within the, within a general fund. So that's, you know, what we use to pay all of the, the main services that the town provides. Um, in chapter five, there's actually a very detailed list of all the various revenue items by line item, by line item. So if you want more detail as to how are these various numbers, what the breakdown of these numbers, it would be reflected in, in chapter five. Uh, this is sales tax collections. Um, it's five years of actual and it's comparing it to 17 and 18, which is budget years. Um, like I said, this one, 2017, right now, we're really close to our target for actual collections. Right now we're, you know, a little bit exceeding, but we're, we're still really close to target. We have three months left, so we're hoping that these next three months will be good months and will far exceed our budget. Um, our 17, 18 budget for sales tax collection is based on my estimates or what I think we're going to collect for this current 17, 16, 17 fiscal year. So we will really be closely monitoring our collections to make sure that my projection of what we're going to collect and what we actually collect are very close. Cause if we don't, then we're kind of starting behind the eight ball a little bit for the upcoming fiscal year. Um, you can see that's the breakdown by the various categories. The red is, is retail. That's a, you can see how that's grown over the years and, and it's a little bit distorted because in 2000, 2015, 16, a bar, uh, that's when we increased our sales tax rate from 2.33 to 2.83. So five months of that was basically five months of sales tax collection at a higher rate. And then 17 and 18 is a full year at the higher tax rate. So not really comparing apples to, to apples here, but you know, this is what has actually been budgeted and collected. Only area of concern, I think like I've always stated, construction, it's a very lot, bottom line to blue. Uh, it doesn't look like much, but it's around 2 million or 10% of our total budget. And that is a one-time revenue. So, you know, in the past, we were really reliant on that one-time revenue. As you can see, we really are not anymore. But if all of a sudden we have another downturn and that goes even for less than 2 million, all that money basically will have to come out of the general fund because the majority of the money for construction is used for one-time revenue expenditures typically capital. So anything along, along those lines basically would have to come to a halt. So it still supports the general fund quite substantially, even though it doesn't look that much right here. Uh, this is intergovernmental revenues. I just wanted to show you this represents, um, this is about over 18 million dollars. These, what, six, seven categories, six categories, um, which is actually 22% of our total budget, total revenues. So it's a large portion of our budget. Uh, most of the money that you see or most of the budget here comes from the state. So we really don't have any control over how accurate or, or how, you know, if this money comes in or not, typically they're very close. So, um, we really don't have any control over it. Um, the one at the very top, that's, uh, John Munderloes. Basically it's that Upper Verde River Water Protection Corps mission. So if you want to have, yeah, I practiced all day on that. So if you really want any more information, you know, John, it's a pass through. Uh, basically we just account for it because we have to control it and, and budget for it so we can spend it.
And just a heads up, we may be bringing in another over a million dollar pass through one.
Well, if that's truly the case and it does truly pass through, we, we have some work to do because we're not sure where we have the budget for a million dollar pass through grant. So we'll have to think about how we're going to handle that one. Um, other intergovernmental revenues, that's kind of agreements we have with, or money we get from the Yavapai Flood Control District, you know, Yavapai Library, all those type of, um, funding comes, is included in other intergovernmental. Uh, this slide again, this shows five years actual and then the current budget. Uh, I guess my only point, I was just going to point here, show here is that, or mention here is that as you saw, sales tax, sales tax was, was increasing dramatically at a lot faster pace. This right here, you can just see it's a very slow, very, you know, we do, we are seeing increases, but it's, it's not very substantial increases. Um, and it's also going to change by year. It's all based on, for the most part, based on our population. So as long as Prescott Valley continues to grow at a faster, higher rate than what the state as a whole grows, then you'll see this continue. If we don't, if we, for some reason, our, our population goes slightly less in, in increase than the state as a whole, then you'll see a, either a leveling off or actually a slight decrease in our collection. So every year, that's what we kind of all wait, you know, how much money are we going to get from the state, how much? So part of that is for, for our population numbers. So we wait for those numbers every year. Um, impact fees, here's the one point I was trying to make earlier, 17, 18, that's budget. If you compare it to 16, you can see we're, I'm below, um, what we actually collected and, and that's, you know, I look at the number of permits, I think we're going to issue the following year, which is not nearly as much as Richard wants me to budget for, but anyway, so I come up with my projections and, and he has his projections, but what is, what's included in the budget book are unfortunately my collection, my projections. So, um, it is less typically. So if the money is collected, it sits in the funds to be used at a future time. So the money, it doesn't go away. It'll always be used for some capital project. Uh, grant revenues, I just want to kind of show this as a total. Um, it's like 5.1 million dollars and this is the breakdown by the various, um, funds. Again, if you want, um, more input from the various department directors regarding their grants, um, it's kind of listed here. Most of the money, as you saw the previous slide, 3.6 million is capital. So we don't have, we don't use a lot of money for ongoing operational expenses. Most of it is just related to capital, paying for overtime for something, things like that. So, uh, it's one time, mostly one-time expenditures. Here's the change in fund balance. Um, I'm trying to show this a little bit different. I don't know if it's going to help or hurt, but this is on page, um, 43. On page 43, I kind of show the beginning, what our projected beginning fund balance is, shows revenues, expenditures, and then I have projected ending fund balance. Now what this slide shows is that for the general fund, you know, I'm showing a beginning fund balance of about over 18 million dollars. Well, the blue bar is the one that's beginning fund balance, the red bar.
That's not in here.
No, it's not. I've, I've taken that information and just putting it as a, um, so the, the blue bar is the, what's projected, the, the red bar is the ending. So in a general fund, basically we're actually adding to our fund balance by over a half a million dollars. In HERF, basically it's a wash. There's $7,000 draw on our balance and really if we looked at that sooner, we probably could have made adjustments into HERF budget to show a true balanced budget. Now capital or impact fees, this is primarily for the circulation and public safety and parks and rec, basically, uh, impact fees. We are going to be using some of the balance, you know, a couple million dollars to basically pay for capital projects. Um, we're going to finish by, Bob Avers Park is in here, the, the intersection at Long Look and Glassford Hill is in here, and then basically police building expansion. In all those cases, typically we are using some of the existing funds, our, our existing balances to pay for our expenditures this year. Now, when we, in a previously, when we talk about rainy day fund, the rainy day fund is specifically really is supposed to be designated to the general fund. The general fund is, has always been known as to keep a rainy day fund is a general fund only. So in the other ones, we have to spend the money within a certain time period. So impact fees, we just can't sit on the money and not spend it. So we have to utilize it over a, a period of time. So we have to keep spending that money. Third of a cent, which is capital improvements, you can see the huge draw that we're, we're going to be, um, pulling from the cash reserves. We are using cash reserves to fund our viewpoint drive project. But this is a third of a cent that we've accumulated over years and years and years of collections. So now we're going to basically start using that money that we've collected. And instead of going out and issue debt, we basically are cash funding a lot of our capital projects. So that's why there's this, there's this difference here in, in, you know, that 13 million dollars is really, you know, you have to break it down, in my opinion, you have to break it down by the various funds to get a better understanding of, you know, is it a, are we in fiscal trouble or not? And in all these situations, you know, I would say we're not. Definitely in the general fund, we're adding fund balance. These are projections. We hope that we add a million dollars or more to general fund fund balance. But, so I hope that kind of explained some of the, um, the questions as it relates to fund balance and use of funds. This one right here is just the, for the enterprise. Um, again, enterprise accounting and governmental accounting are slightly different and I'm trying to avoid gaining intel of the differences, the accounting terminologies, but this is showing a draw on fund balance, reserves. Um, at the end of the day, I don't believe that that's truly going to be the case, but this is budget purposes. Uh, we'll be reclassifying expenditures and things like that, and we think we're going to actually have a positive, an increase to our fund balance, not a draw on fund balance. So with that, I hope that kind of addresses some of the concerns and issues. Part of it is, it's, you know, it's a, I mean, if you just look at one page, on page 4.1 or something, you see that bottom line, 13 million dollar draw, last year 12 million. It's like, you know, are we, what are we doing? Uh, again, if you look by basically broken down by fund, I think it addresses it a lot Uh, last slide, um, here are the next two items that I'll be coming back to you in, um, basically two weeks to, uh, for the adoption of tentative budget and then June 22nd will be adoption or the public hearing and approval of final budget. So then everyone can start spending their money come July 1. So with that, I'll try to answer any questions or comments anyone might have.
Mary?
Bill, I had a couple of things. Um, well, in the beginning, when you showed, um, the year 11, 12, the debt service that we had, and then it was very uplifting to see how much debt that we have paid off. That is like just, that's wonderful.
Yeah, and tomorrow, um, I'll be talking about debt service and actually I think I have another slide or a part of the budget book I can point to that really reflects the, the trend of where we are and where we're going to be going forward. I think which will be good.
That's exciting. Um, I, uh, I wanted to get back over to where you talked about the PSPRS. So, um, are we at this point really kind of unsure? Did I misunderstand or are we unsure of what our amount is or that it possibly may be going up because of some other issues? Did I hear that correctly or am I?
No, that's correct. I mean, every year it hasn't stabilized at all over the past couple of years. It's, it's grown almost inconsistently over the last couple of years. Um, we're hoping by putting additional half a million, applying half a million dollars toward it, at least it'll come down a little bit. But until this lawsuit is, um, they figure out what actual impact it's going to have on the various cities, I'm not a hundred percent sure if that unfunded liability will go up by just a couple hundred thousand dollars or is it going to go up by half a million dollars? Until, no one knows for sure at this point, uh, what impact that's going to have on us or in the various cities. So I'm waiting for that information. I don't know for sure how dramatic it's going to be to us. So, um, but until that's resolved, then I think we'll have a better idea of where we stand and then how long it's going to take us to pay down our unfunded liability.
Yeah, it, it's very important to understand the hole is going to get deeper with PSPRS because as we have more and more officers that retire, uh, that are under the existing system, that's going to be a greater and greater draw. That's why it's really, uh, important to appreciate what you have directed staff to do, and that is any growth in our half cent sales tax increase that we implemented a year and a half ago, any growth in that fund is to be dedicated for PSPRS debt retirement. That's huge. Other communities have not had that type of foresight, uh, and in addition to that, they have older police departments and fire departments or larger of each. And that's why you see in the newspaper, even locally, that the unfunded liability in some communities is really high and they're having to grapple with that. You have a handle on it, okay? But the thing that's important is that the hole is only going to get bigger as more and more people enter into the retirement system. Now, with the PSPRS reform that has been undertaken, any new officer hired after July 1, meaning in 60 days roughly, um, it's a, it's a completely different system that is going to be much more affordable for cities and towns, take out some of the elements that have dug this very deep hole. And so it, there is light at the end of the tunnel, but years from now, okay? Because you can't undo the commitments that have been made to officers that are relying on that. And so, uh, there are a number of reforms that have been done, uh, but we are all collectively, cities and towns saddled with, uh, a debt that's going to be growing.
And that's, and that's just new, actually new police officers, not laterals, anyone that comes in from a different city and we, we hire, they still fall under the old criteria. So these would be new officers that basically just coming out of the academy, those officers then would fall under the new criteria that begins July 1.
Okay, and I just, one more question was, um, you mentioned the general fund and then you brought up the rainy day fund. So was I understanding correctly when you said that basically our rainy day fund is in the general fund? Is that what you, okay.
Yep.
All right, thank you, Bill.
Yep. Laura?
Going back to the prior issue, Larry, how many offers do we currently have in the drop situation? Do you know?
About four or five, uh, that are in drop.
And they're at different places in that.
That is correct.
I do want to point out though, the one thing that we did, another change, and I forgot to mention, that we did this year, when officers go into a drop, it's not mandatory that we actually, the town withholds their share and pays toward the public safety. It's supposed to be like, you know, a benefit for us, but by not paying that, we just kind of fall further behind in the long run. So actually this year, uh, we started all officers that are in the drop program. We are going to still continue paying for their benefit as if they were not in the drop program.
We should be polite to people at home watching and would you explain what a drop is?
Well, there's officers that within, that fall in there, what, 20 years, you know, they can put in for retirement. It, it's a specific time then they have to retire by. But during that time period, basically their share of their, their retirement program goes into a separate account, basically for them to cash out at the end of that time period. During that same time period, we are not required, the town is not required to pay for the, the town's share of their retirement obligation. Basically it's like five years of, you know, supposedly cash that we can use for whatever purpose. Well, because of all the officers that have gone through the drop and we haven't really budgeted for them in the past, you know, once those officers retire, all of a sudden there's, the money isn't there to start paying their retirement. So this year we did initiate, we decided as part of our budget process that we were going to budget whatever their, the normal contribution rate is for those officers and pay, apply that to our fund balance, our unfunded liability with public safety retirement
Larry, I think what we ought to do is look at scheduling a work study where we can, all of us, maybe learn a little more about the police department, the retirement system and PSPRS and this, how it stands, uh, sometime in the future.
Yeah, and we have an opportunity, we're going to be hosting, uh, in July. Yeah, and we have an opportunity, we're going to be hosting in July, a meeting of invited cities and towns to talk about and listen to presentations about public safety retirement. And we're going to be hosting that here. That would be a perfect time to go ahead and learn about it. But one thing that's important to go ahead and note is that the public safety retirement system made some terrible mistakes, the drop program being one. And they did that back when the fund was very healthy, and that was pre-recession. Unfortunately, PS, PRS, public safety retirement, was heavily invested in real estate. And so you can imagine what happened in '07 and '08. Those investments diminished in value pretty dramatically, and therein lies one of the reasons that the fund is in trouble. Second reason being that they gave away unreasonable benefits that were just crazy, crazy ridiculous.
Yeah, like a 4% increase every year?
Yes, an ongoing cola that happened regardless of what the economy was doing. Between that and the drop, it did a really good job of draining the fund, as opposed to Arizona State Retirement, which is financially in relatively good shape by comparison.
Okay. Any other questions?
Thank you. I'll turn it over to Larry, and we'll start going and talk about councils.
All right, put on your seat belts, and here we go. Bill is always the slow part of the first evening. He is, okay? But take a look at your calendar here and your allotted time. All of the department heads know they get an extra cookie if they get done more quickly than the time allotted for them. And so with that in mind, do you have any questions about the council or executive management? Actually, no, I was kidding. If you will turn to page 65 in your budget book, you'll see that the council budget followed very closely to the mandates that were given, which is a 2% operational increase, okay? On the council budget, you'll see that there were two things that drove the cost of that budget up. Number one was the dues for Arizona League of Cities and Towns, that went up by 8%. And then there's $6,000 for banners in your budget to celebrate the fortieth anniversary of the town, per your direction. But essentially, your budget is unchanged from that with those two notable exceptions. Do you have any questions about the council budget? Hearing none. Going to executive management. You will see that if you turn to page 68, you will see the accomplishments of the past year, the objectives. You'll see that we came in at the 2% in executive management. Of note in that budget is that there is a new vehicle to replace the existing truck 631. That truck is going to the Public Works Department, so they are paying 50% of the new vehicle, and then out of this budget is 50% in executive management. Following your direction from retreat, we are upgrading the town news. It is going to color and expanding to four pages. And we got, we've gotten some really good prices on that that make that something that's doable. You'll also note that under Channel 56, we eliminated the funding to the Prescott Media Center for the second community access channel. We are no longer going to have that in place. If you'll also notice, under economic development, not much has changed in that. That is pretty much labor-intensive and telephone-intensive. And underwater, you'll hear more from John Munderlow tomorrow night, when he comes in with Neil on utilities. But you'll see that executive management held the line very good on its proposed expenditures. Do you have any questions on executive management?
No.
All right. Hearing none. Going to non-departmental, if you would. That is jumping all the way back to page 6209.
Oh, wow, that's way back there. Way, way, way. 205.
You'll see that in non-departmental, we have a number of categories that include things like, under capital expenditures, three and a half million dollars, we're talking about fronting the money to accomplish the library roof. You'll also see some other expenditures that are being proposed. If you turn to 209, you'll see a breakdown of that. In addition to that, you'll see, this is where we have something that Bill referred to earlier, which is developer reimbursements. And just to refamiliarize everybody, for example, we have a reimbursement agreement out at the crossroads. The intent of that was to assist the developer with the improvements to Highway 69. And so one cent of the taxes that is collected out there goes to that developer to reimburse for all the improvements to Highway 69. In addition to that, over here at the marketplace project, where you have Kohl's and Walmart and all that, the developer acted as a bank, made the improvements to Glassford Hill Road, adding lanes, three signal lights, landscape median, and we had committed to reimburse a penny of the sales tax collected to go ahead and assist in the payment of that, to act as an incentive. And so you see those numbers in non-departmental. You will also see, and just as a historical note, back in 2004, the mayor and council at that time were allocating in excess of $100,000 a year to local nonprofits. In 2004, staff was directed to knock that off, okay? Get that back down to a completely different number, because it wasn't believed that it was the town's role to be funding a number of local nonprofits. There was no question, every one of those groups was doing a great job, but it was just not the role of mayor and council to engage in that. And just as an aside, in talking to other city managers, they all struggle with that, and some cities hand out, like Santa Claus, hundreds of thousands of dollars on an annual basis. I was directed, go ahead and get that number down to the bare minimum, which was TIPS, the trauma intervention group, prevent child abuse, and that's about it. We don't include the chamber or PVEDF in that, because we're actually contracting for services that they provide. So are there any questions on non-departmental?
Yes.
Yes.
Under insurance, item 5255, explain losses.
If I'm not mistaken, go ahead, Diane.
The figure that you're talking about is what we budget, the proposed deductibles that we will have to pay for the year. In other words, if a claim comes in, let's use it, and it has a $1,000 deductible, before the insurance will kick in and pay the remainder of that claim, we pay the deductible from that fund upfront.
Okay.
Okay.
It's had such a jump, that's why I was wondering.
We have a high deductible, because we keep our insurance rate as low as we possibly can. And that's just a balancing act.
Thank you.
Anything else on non-departmental?
The police department.
You'll notice there's a ADOR fee, I'm looking at line item 3851. That's a fee that, with the change in state law, we are charged $86,000 by the Arizona Department of Revenue to go ahead and allocate our sales taxes back to us.
Yeah. And you know, when did that start?
That law went in place two years ago, three years ago, they were kicking it around. I think the fees started two years ago.
Okay.
We all had a fit at the time, literally.
I remember that, actually.
I'll still have a fit.
Anything else? Okay, if there is nothing else, I will gladly turn the microphone over to a very eager Stuart.
Well, thanks for coming, Stuart.
Well, Mayor and Council, as you know, as a tradition for almost 30 years, I usually hand out something prior to my presentation, and this year was getting more difficult to find something, usually it's a toy. So I went to Cracker Barrel, and I bought seven whoopee cushions, but my administrative assistant said, as she does pronounce my name, Stuart, you can't do that. So we changed routine, and we have something for you from the cafe. However, if you want a whoopee cushion, I have not taken them back, and I'll be glad to give it to you. But it was getting difficult to find something that we could, to give you. So I'll just quickly talk about, as you know, I usually take the operational increase, and I park it in the administrative section of the library budget, and then throughout the year, as I look at the budget and our expenses, I start to dole that money out for materials. So, for example, I think about a month ago, I think it was Ted, I took $10,000, and I went ahead and directed that for Ted to go ahead and spend it on materials. So basically, that's where we put our increase. We're going to talk just real briefly about the capital. This is the first time we had submitted some capital requests. Casey will talk about the gates. But my boss, Ryan Judy, wanted me to make sure to say that the landscaping request on this side of the building, on the other side of the college, basically, is in the budget for this year. However, he said after the roof, because they will need the stage there. So he wanted me to share that.
At least it's a line item, finally.
That's right. Okay, Casey, if you want to come up and talk, and while they're up, I want to acknowledge, I've got three trustees that are here, and I think that's really great.
Good evening. So our gates, our security gates, which are right in the front of the library, they help prevent loss of materials, and they also count the amount of people that come in daily. The gates are at the end of life, meaning the company doesn't support them anymore, the components are outdated, they, if anything happens to the gates, which has happened, I've been able to kind of pull it along, but I think in this case, it's better to be proactive than reactive in this situation, and purchase new gates. The last time they were down, we were, they were down for a week, so we didn't have those door counts, and we could have more than likely lost materials that walked out the door. So having a new gate where we don't have to have tech logic come out frequently to fix it will also save us money. I think last year, we had tech logic charge us over $4,000 for costs to come up and to fix the gate and our sorter. So it can be expensive, so in the long run, it will save us money. Any questions? Okay.
And then Ted's going to come up and talk about, you're aware of the grant that we had this year, they called the Oasis Grant, where it was all this learning for these people on technology. And so he'll talk about another part of that capital request that was approved.
Hi there. We have had great success with our Oasis program. Michelle Yortin has gotten a lot of response from the community, and the classes that she has scheduled through this nationwide program have been overflowing, and we're not able to meet that need. And of course, when the grant runs out, then there's no more instructor to teach those classes. And so we were looking for and put into the budget contract services to get a contractor to come in and teach those classes. And so in our community, largely seniors that are taking these classes, which are a real wide variety of small devices, like iPads and iPhones and so forth, to things like Windows 10. So if any of you maybe are not familiar with Windows 10, I'm starting a class tomorrow, so you're welcome to look over my shoulder and make sure I don't mess anything up.
Facebook.
So, Facebook, Casey does a Facebook class. So anyway, we have just gotten a real positive response from the community, we want to continue this, and feel that it's real important that we do so. The demand is just overwhelming, and we just can't not do this, and so it's real important.
I want to commend you for that, and I want to commend you for the large variety of activities that you provide for this community. Every time I see your schedule, I think, I wish I could go.
They have some, like last Friday, they had the silent book reading.
Yes.
Silent reading.
Yeah.
And there's always coming out with great ideas. I did want to say a couple more things about the Oasis Grant, and then maybe they can help me back that up. First of all, there's a waiting list for almost every class, and the lab holds 24, is that what we're, 20? Anyway, and the other thing is, that fund, it was a grant from the feds through the state library, but it was supported by AT&amp;T, and AT&amp;T, and maybe you can help me back this up, was so impressed with, can you share that part of it?
Yes, they were so impressed with what Michelle did, with what Michelle did, they want to get her feedback and have her tell the story, so it can be a part of the program to show the success that we've had here. So it's a pretty big deal, so we're really excited about that.
Congrats.
Yeah.
Any questions? Anybody want a whoopee cushion, raise your hand.
I'm sure Kirk would want one of those.
Oh, Richard would, yeah. I'm sorry, Mary, what was that?
I was going to say, I bet Kirk would want one of those, he's just a character.
I'll make sure it gets over to the civic center in a brown envelope.
He's going to get me for this.
Okay, well, thanks very much for supporting the library.
Thanks, Stuart.
Hey, Richard, it's your turn.
I'm looking for a cookie, so I'm going to be uncharacteristically brief.
Yeah, but Larry's providing the cookie.
Yeah, that's true. Probably if he baked it himself, it probably doesn't taste very good. 658, we talk about some of the accomplishments and our objectives for 1718. We're busy. We're going to hit a number that Bill doesn't agree with, but if you look at the actuals, at the projections and the actuals, I'm closer to the real number than Bill is. So that's listed under 659. Couple of highlights, been very fortunate that I work with a really good team, it's mindful of not spending money when you don't need to spend money, and we routinely turn ending fund balances back to the general fund as opposed to spend that money. And we've done that consistently, and I needed to recognize Vicki Anderson in my office. She's the one that administers the budget, and she largely prepares the budget. Unfortunately for you folks, she's not able to join me today. She carried forward with the budget presentation, as you recall, last year, and did a yeoman's effort. But a couple of highlights is, we will be coming to you probably next month in a work study, talking to you a little bit about the need for a technology fee. We're joined by Yavapai County in seeking software, bringing the county into this century, and updating our software that has been manipulated in-house for the last 15 years. Exella, the version we have for our permitting software is no longer supported by Exella. And so as part of the budget, every year, we've included approximately $4,500 each year for consultant services to keep that limping along. Last year, Larry parked $300,000 in our capital budget to replace that software. That would get us halfway there. This year, he tells me, I got to come up with a better approach for funding. So we'll be seeking your guidance as it relates to a technology fee, which would be applied to every permitting fee that is assessed by the town of Prescott Valley. When I say every, I'm including When I say every, I'm including things as well, like engineering fees, where they're getting permits for engineering fees, and utility fees, so that they can use that software as well. It's a land-based software. If you'd like, we can put together a presentation to the council. But the good thing is going to be that Yavapai County will join us, so their databases will be transferable directly into our database. And of course, now they're on a system called Govern, which speaks some Canadian language. It's been around for about 15 or 16 years, and it doesn't report to anything. So we'll be on the same page, and I think that's important. You've often heard me remark about the fact that we live in a sea of Yavapai County. So with that in mind, Jody will be excited about this. You can draw a line around the town of Prescott Valley out into the county and do mapping statistically, whether it be roads, road traveling, or population and demographics and things like that. So no longer, you'll be limited by the corporate boundaries of the town of Prescott Valley when we're doing planning work and so forth. The county is issuing an RFP at the beginning of the fiscal year, and we're proposing that we implement this fee and we join with Yavapai County, or potentially move forward independent of Yavapai County as part of the next fiscal year. The other thing is, Larry's been very gracious in the times past, and he recognizes the fact that we respond to requests for services not quite as expeditiously as the police department, but we do on a per-call basis. So if you call in to the town of Prescott Valley, by 7 o'clock in the morning, you'll get your inspection that day. We also support cell phones, and believe it or not, contractors and building inspectors are speaking throughout the day, resolving issues and problems, and that's an unusual aspect to a building department, and we will continue to do that with Larry's commitment that if we hit 60, a steady pace of better than 60 residential starts, then we'll be needing to add an additional building inspector, and that's built into the budget.
You don't get lights and sirens.
Yeah, right. We get a lot of old cop cars, but seemingly of late, they come to us pretty beaten up. We were very fortunate, if you recall, we bought a couple of vehicles this year. We put one in the budget as a capital expense. We were able to commandeer the old Dare vehicle, which was a Dakota truck, and you'll see it driving around with flames on it temporarily until we can pass the next budget and we can actually paint it white. We took all the decals off, but that vehicle only has 60,000 miles. It's a 1992, and we're going to drive the wheels off of it. Also, we're trading with Bill, he has a mail van. One of our code enforcement vehicles still is a early, excuse me, late 80s Caprice, and that vehicle will be retired, and we're going to replace it with a 92 little minivan that only has 45,000 miles on. It's been driven daily by an old lady going to the post office, and we're trading them a little pickup truck that better serves their needs. What I'm trying to emphasize, we're trying to be as frugal as we possibly can in spending the town's money. We believe that we're going to be busier this year than we were last, and we were very busy last year. We will be gearing up in the next two budget years for the completion of the decadal census, which will be upcoming, and some of the work that we'll be doing with Yavapai County in establishing census boundaries and things like that, so that we can move swiftly through that process, so you can get more money from the state for HERF and other things. With that, I've spoken long enough, I think I'm into maybe five minutes, so I do get a cookie, I would respond to any questions you may have.
I don't have a question. I just wanted to say, there is that one other service that you offer to people who are thinking about doing, building something, or moving into an area, and I always forget exactly what the name of that is.
Initial project review, IPR.
Yeah.
And that's done as a service free to the public, and it's done very quickly, again, not at cop speed, but it's done very quickly in our business. And coincidentally, we're doing one out of sequence tomorrow in hopes of trying to get somebody in the Hagan Building, and the owner of that building's coming forward to meet with us about opportunities to expand that building.
Well, that, I think that is just an amazing service, because there's so many things that a lot of people don't know, and they need the help, and that service is just wonderful, I appreciate that. And when you talked about the truck, did you say it was a truck with flames on it?
Yeah, it's a Dodge Dakota out there.
Well, I'm just figuring you could just keep those flames and say, you know, we're on fire in this department.
Well, one thing for sure is, it'll be recognized out in the field, they'll know that the building inspector's coming.
Yeah.
Thank you for your attention.
Mark?
I just have to say, I always look forward to your report about your vehicles. You have the most esoteric vehicles of any department, and I look forward every year to hearing the story behind them.
Well, and likewise, we offered to give Larry, for the council's use, the Caprice, because it does have cruise control, as well as a few dents from the 1999 hailstorm, but you're welcome to use it, it's going to be going out at auction.
Richard, before you go.
Uh-oh, question.
Why not? Something that you mentioned early on regarding the technology, most companies, Microsoft, Intel, all of them, you know, at some point, they're always upgrading, and with the upgrade comes a removal of support to an earlier version, okay? And if I'm not mistaken, you did say that for future reference, you are going to be charging a fee so that we're able to stay ahead of the change of technology and support?
A couple of things. Yes, you are correct, we are currently maintaining in-house with consultant services and antiquated Exella permitting services program that's no longer supported by the maker, Exella. They've moved on to Exella automation. They no longer sell the software, they lease it to you, and that's going to be an annual expense based on each seat that you have that installed on, and actually, it'll be the number of users, you can have multiple seats all through the town, but the number of users that use that software at any one time. So we're trying to figure that out. But that will be a relatively constant dollar amount, it's really easy to cover with a small technology fee. The bigger cost is going to be the translation or conversion of all the data that we have in our systems into a new system. In the case of Chino Valley, they don't have a system, they still have hammers and rocks and chisels, so in that case, there's no conversion, they start from fresh. And coincidentally, we did that when we started with this Exella process. So it's valuable to move that data into the new format, and then from that point forward, we'll pay through a subscription price. The cost of the conversion is many times greater than the cost of the software leasing annually, so we have to develop a budget that'll amortize that entire cost of that service over whatever period of time it's going to take to pay for it. The good news is, right now, we're having permits go out the door rather rapidly. The higher, obviously, the volume of permits and revenues that we generate, the lower that fee needs to be. So initially, we're thinking about, and I'll probably be recommending to you, that we look at that annually to amortize the value of your investment over a period of time. And if we find out that, my gosh, we're going crazy with permits and the revenues are way up, that number should migrate downward over time, so that you don't gig people, but rather you pay what's absolutely necessary. At some point in time, that will become de minimis compared to the value derived of that service. Now, in times past, when we were flush, we would just go buy the software, and we'd implement it and spend 3/4 of a million dollars. That's no longer the case, so we're going to be looking at establishing a revenue source. And it's fair, because those that benefit from the services and the ability to go to your computer and pull that information up are the ones who are going to pay for it.
Well, having said that, I just have a little follow-up. Is there any way that we could have some sort of a cooperative purchasing program where we partner with the county and some neighboring cities and towns, so that we could, because you know in the future, they're going to be changing software every three, four, five years, similar to the way the carmakers keep changing, you know, the models and what the cars look like.
That's the direction we're going at present, until we hit a snag, that will be what we'll be recommending to you. There is an RFP that'll be on the streets the first of the next fiscal year by Yavapai County, establishing us as a partner in that process. There's really not a lot of cost savings, because we're the big dog, we're the ones with all the data. However, there may be some value, as you pointed out, into a longer-term relationship. Not to lose my cookie, but really quickly, we're finding that because we're smaller than the county, the county's population threshold is to an extent that they will pay a greater subscription fee per seat annually by a third than we will as a smaller jurisdiction, so it may not make sense for us to participate with them. We may use their same RFP process, but over time, until we get to 200,000 persons, the cost of those subscription fees will be significantly higher if we join Yavapai County as opposed to necessarily do it on our own. And we've been the one that have been the dog with the tailwagon, and we continue to want to have that be customized for our use, so our citizens can go to Prescott Valley to look at Prescott Valley information if they choose to, as opposed to be routed through Yavapai County into Prescott Valley.
When this comes to you in work study, you'll see the complexities of it, but also the very easy solution. And the nut is so big to crack, that we were hoping that you would strongly consider implementing this technology fee and give us 12 months accrual, so then we're going to be able to go out and overcome the very high price of this. But once we've got it, it'll be good for the way technology is, at least three or four years.
Actually, no, it'll be good for as long as you pay that subscription, because to your very point, as long as you have the subscription, every time they upgrade it, you get the package. The downside to that is you go into a queue every time something goes wrong, and you go into a queue, and then you have a programmer fix it. I've been spoiled, because we have a consultant at the end of a leash, and if we have a problem and we want to change a report, I jerk that leash and it happens that fast. So there's some advantages and disadvantages to going this direction, but it's the wave of the future in having software in a cloud-based technology. No longer are you going to be storing it on a mainframe, or a PC, or anything like that. I will listen to Casey, obviously, because Casey is our IT guy, and he's all for it. I tried to get it in his budget, but Bill, for some reason, wouldn't let that happen.
Thank you for that great answer.
Thank you.
Good evening, gang, how are we?
How are we?
All right. Well, now it's time to wake up, so I appreciate that, doing those things. Quickly, I hope that we have made you proud in our Parks and Recreation Department. We still have 58 days remaining in the current fiscal cycle, and still a great deal to accomplish within that timeframe. But I know we've met a number of those goals, and actual opportunities exceeded them as well, too. Coming up into our next fiscal year, to be upfront and honest with you, Parks and Recreation is rather flat, with exception of three key areas, and these are all focusing more so in our Parks Division, and also in our Special Events Division. Within Parks, you're seeing about $115,000 in increase. Those three areas of representing those increases focus upon our professional services. This is a strategy of outsourcing, our custodial services within our parks. You're also seeing an increase of $50,000 within water. That is due not only to our current park inventory increases, but also an anticipated future park increase with Granville's development in doing business there. In addition to that, also, we've budgeted an increase in our electricity, simply because of the coming online of Bob Edwards and the utilization of that sports lighting, which will be significant based upon its use and technology that we have available to us. So that represents that $115,000 of increase within our parks. Outside of that, Special Events, we'll see an increase of approximately about $30,000. This will reflect upon Special Events, as our town manager alluded to earlier, 40th anniversary highlights that will come throughout next fiscal year. Also, programming that will be focusing on the possibility of returning Gold Fever Days to operations, balloon festival events, splash and dash activities, as well as also theater on the green programming of doing those activities. Beyond that, minimal increases in aquatics, highly revolved around increases that we're already seeing now related to chemicals, but also instructor charges for programs and services, training supplies and education of our staff, which is critical to its operations. And then much beyond that, a very small increase in our Arts and Culture Division, again, related around professional services and specialty supplies, to increasing both visual and performing arts opportunities there. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions you might have on those small but blossoming opportunities.
I want you to know, there was nothing flat about Arbor Day. For you that weren't there, the wind was terrible. We were up in the neighborhood I'm privileged to live in, in George Anderson. The kids were fabulous, but I didn't faze them, and we have all those addition of all those trees. I wish more, more people would go and just observe on those events. I don't think your department gets enough credit for all of these singular events that don't draw a lot of people, but they had, I don't know which school or how many schools were there, but man, they're, those were happy children, and I think we can take pride in that.
Without a doubt, and that is one of the aspects of our department's operation, is growth and education of our young people in a variety of different ways, physically, mentally, and emotionally. So thank you for identifying one of those goals that we reach out to, and that was just one of our small single events in doing that.
Mary, do you have a question?
I do. And I don't know where this falls in the case of money, but I think that we had talked about looking at your general plan for your department. I don't know if that's the correct title that you give it.
Right. Our master plan in doing such.
Yeah, your master plan, there we go.
Yes, that was a definite discussion item, unfortunately, it did not make this round of presentation for council in this fiscal year.
Okay.
Yeah, I was just, I had a question regarding the Boys and Girls Club. Is that somehow affiliated with your department relative to this future development?
It is. We're partners in activities and services and administering that facility over there, serving as its liaison. We partner in a number of different activities together, and this particular Community Development Block Grant project for its expansion is worked upon both out of the manager's office as well as Parks and Recreation.
Okay. So we're still kind of in the planning stages with the blueprint for that, I think, right?
Yes, you are correct. So that blueprint is available to us, we're looking at it, refining it a little bit, as well as then also working with our partner with the Boys and Girls Club, because they're looking at their fundraising mechanisms that they have, they do have current monies available to them, but they're trying to grow those, so that not only when we go through the expansion with the new portion of the building, but also updates of our current existing facility as well. So between the block grant of 650,000, 670,000, they're looking at an additional 400,000 to bring to the table as well. So they are partnering strongly in that project.
So we'll anticipate programming through the town in some of those facilities?
We will. That'll be some expansion in regards to focusing on our adult athletic services, as well as that our community and outdoor ed, utilizing that facility. Part of our partnering agreement that we have with the Boys and Girls Club is there in the mornings, when the children are arriving, and then as well as after-school services. We currently utilize the facility for midday services for our adults in our community, and then focusing again on the evenings with those activities there.
Great.
Yes.
Well, I'll look forward to seeing more information about that.
No doubt. Yes, hoping to grow quite a bit. Beyond that, on capital plans, they're not that deep. We do have some efforts that we're wanting to make at the end of the aquatic season to our slide there. to our slide there. And then in addition to that, some improvements over at Casa Park. We have three particular picnic sites that are in need of removal, and we're replacing that with a single unit that we have there. And then also putting into inventory a new mower, side mower. When I say side, a non-large area, some of our Pocket Park focuses that we'll be able to address in that way, too, and provide redundancies for our main mower as well.
Okay, Laura?
I forgot when I was talking about Arbor Day. I wanted to ask you about the splash pad. How much more time do we have with that? It's starting to really show wear and tear.
The splash pad, as well as then also the synthetic turf, both have limited timeframes. We're looking at probably total replacement of that splash pad within next or the preceding fiscal year. It does go through those processes and...
I'm glad to hear it's that soon because it's going to continue to deteriorate rapidly once it gets to this point.
Yes, ma'am, you are correct.
Nothing else? Thank you, Brian.
You're welcome.
Here comes the judge.
You've been waiting all night to say that.
I have.
All right, good evening. Appreciate being here. I'm sitting back and listening to the other presenters, I thought. Generally, I don't say much. The court's kind of the same year after year on the budget. Not much changes. People come and see me. I administer the cases. However, in listening to Richard Parker, I realized that you would want to hear that the court is actually also undergoing a change in software as well. The Supreme Court actually is the one that puts out a test program and then develops it and then tells all the rest of the courts they have to use it. So that's transition from what we call Aztec to Ajax is going to happen sometime this calendar year. And I had a clerk go to where that was discussed, and the transition, as Richard mentioned, is a major aspect. We're told it'll take at least six months to transition our information from one system to the other. And it's going to be a major issue, and the clerks are going to be pulling their hair out because we run various reports, and then there's pages and pages of things that have to get changed and cleaned up before it can get into the new system. I suppose the good news for the court situation is the Supreme Court divides this fee up over all of the, I think about 400 courts in Arizona, and so we pay a lease fee for the software and every device that we hook up to the system. It only costs us about $8,000 to $10,000 every year. So listening to these other amounts, I'm thinking, I always thought that was an awful lot, but maybe in the whole scheme of things, I ought to be real happy as to the amount. So I wanted you to know that. So if my clerks seem really busy, they're really busy now, but they'll get even busier. The other thing, I listened to Brian withy in his presentation, he talks about activities. The court has activities, too. On Wednesday, we have activity called arraignment. People come to court. I either tell them how much they owe or set them for another hearing or set them to meet with the prosecutor. On Tuesday and Thursday mornings, I have an activity of accepting play agreements and tell them how much they have to pay and whether they have to go to jail and do counseling. And then on Tuesday and Thursday afternoons, I have an activity called trials. And so we do trials, too. Contrary to perhaps like Brian would like is increased participation, I would prefer less participation. But obviously, not making light of people's right to be in court and have their trials and all, I would really like to see far less people, but that doesn't seem to be the trend. So any questions regarding the court budget?
Mayor and council, if I could, we've had a relatively free ride with the magistrate court for a number of years in terms of only small incremental increases. We have a suspicion that is going to change in the following fiscal year because there's a study group with the Supreme Court, Arizona Supreme Court, that may, say, may, be mandating certain security devices and protocols be implemented in courts all around the state. That's one potential cost. And there are several others that would end up having an impact on us. But very importantly, the technology change in the magistrate court is not going to be cheap, and we may want to, I say may, once we have a better idea of what it's all going to entail, we may want a technology fee that is associated to the fines that are levied by the judge, because it is only appropriate that the users of that system would end up paying these costs. And as it relates to the conversion from our existing system to the new system, we're going to end up needing to bring a company in to do that rather than try to do it in-house because they're already busy. And so there are ways to go ahead and have a consultant come in or vendor come in and make that transition. Not cheap, and it's coming at us a year from now.
Yeah, and the Supreme Court's made it clear that there will be, every court's going to be looked at in regard to security. And the only real question is, what level do you have to have? Do you have to have airport-level security or something less? And that's yet to be seen. I had somebody from the Supreme Court out for a different reason, and they said, Judge, we want to protect you and have security. And I'm like, been doing this for 19 years. I'm just fine. But then the answer is, well, what if somebody in the audience got into trouble because of something happened? And I guess I have to say, for me, I can say, yes, I accept it because, you know, it's something I've been doing for 19 years. But when you talk about the rest of the public, then it has to be looked at perhaps a little differently. Of course, you still have the situation where, you know, then I walk out to my car, there could be something happening there. But bottom line is, Supreme Court really has decided this will happen, so it is going to happen. It's just the degree. And so I'm waiting to find out what that is.
Questions?
Thank you.
Laura?
I'm very glad that Larry mentioned that because that was one of two things I wanted to ask. And Judge, our society is changing. You see it yourself. We're a little luckier here than in some areas, but we have to be cognizant. I remember how busy you were with radar, and now you're saying you're really busy again. I mean, you've never not been busy, but what is the type of cases that are increasing? And you're busier, you're saying?
The cases that just substantially made a difference when Walmart opened and shoplifting cases just skyrocketed.
I suspected it looking at the police reports, but I didn't want to jump to any conclusions.
It's just amazing, yes.
Do you miss Friday radar days?
I do not miss them. I do not. But that got kind of exchanged for shoplifting.
Yes.
Yes. Mary?
I was just going to say that I can appreciate you telling us about all your activities, but I really don't wish to participate in them. But I do know you have a lot going on in your department, and I do appreciate everything that you do. You do a fine job.
Well, thank you.
Thank you, Judge.
I appreciate that.
Yeah, I was just curious, do you see and/or anticipate, because of the number of officers we're bringing online, whether that'll have a substantial impact on your schedule?
I was looking at the information, and I thought, gee, if I knew what I knew now, I'd probably put increased estimates as to increase in filings. Since the police department quit using, again, the old technology of the handhelds, presumably they're going to a new one, we now have to hand-enter all tickets now, whereas before we just pushed a button and they all went into the system. I am the one entering most of those tickets. Literally, in one day, we can get a stack that will take me four hours to enter those tickets, and I am the fastest one to enter those tickets in the entire office. And so, again, I've got the time. I can stay late. I come in on weekends to do it if necessary. And so I think my estimates were a little low. Now that I'm actually doing these tickets, I'm like, wow, that's a new officer, new officer. And then I actually talked to one of the officers today, one of the older officers, and I said, wow, you sure have written a lot of tickets. And then you have some proteges that are also doing an awful lot. And he said, yes, they added people to the traffic division because of trying to keep us safe out there on the road. So I think we are going up, and I'll be real glad when the police department gets their new handhelds. So that'll be really helpful to the court.
Yeah, no, I appreciate what you're saying, and I agree. I don't think you should be in that situation, and we need to upgrade our status so we can handle that in an efficient way.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thanks.
Anything else?
We appreciate you very much, Judge.
Thank you. Have a great evening.
Thank you, Judge. Norm?
Here comes Norm in the Public Works budget. Bill's referenced me a couple of times on some of our big capital projects, and he's back with his clicker, so he caught me and he wanted me to talk about some of the funds. So we'll hit some of the mini-funds that Public Works provides service. As you're well aware, we provide lots of service and like to spend lots of budget providing service to our residents. What I'd really like to first start off with is staffing. In Public Works, we're rock-solid with 10,000 employees across all the particular divisions. Very, very blessed to have that capability. So we've got people in place that really know their jobs, and it really makes it easy. So appreciate council's efforts towards, you know, continuing to pay commensurate wages with what people can make and very, very easy that way on the service we provide. In addition to great partnerships we have with the contract community and the vendor community, as you're well aware, we provide lots of outsourced contracts in addition to partnering with the contract community. So with the staff in place, we manage lots of service that way with, obviously, a very, very small staff in Public Works with all the outsourcing we're able to do and use that expertise out in the community for the vendors. So you not only get great service, but really strict competition and specialization of a lot of the services we provide and service. Let's start with the general fund to move on to some of the highlights on what we're going to move forward with in this next budget year, starting with the general fund. Start with engineering. The FEMA remapping study, we had a meeting last night. That might be the biggest impact and the greatest, I guess, energy that the public may have. We did get a $200,000 grant through FEMA to remap those particular basins, you know, with the new updated technology, but there has been some changes. There's been many changes to the good, but obviously there's some changes that we need to work on a little more to work with residents to understand their risk with the floodplain changes, because technology gets that much better and identifies risks. So good thing is, the particular field work hadn't been done in 25 years, but new technology provides that risk, and we will work with residents to get that solved. Other thing about engineering, of course, subdivision infrastructure, Richard talked about what his department's seeing. Obviously, Public Works sees the same thing with public infrastructure development. All the new subdivisions that are being proposed, they're running out of lot inventories, so we see great increases, and we've got the staff in place to keep up with it in addition to the outsourcing of any infrastructure with all the new subdivision and that lot inventory that is going to be rebuilt anticipated in the coming year. That's some of the engineering. Talk about facilities. Very good group, kind of unsung at times. This is the year of the roof here in Prescott Valley. We do have in the budget, in the Public Works budget, to put a coating on the Civic Center roof. Good news is, they don't have to take off the roof, but what the technology is, well, good news. What that means, too, though, is we're able to put a membrane over the existing roof. So we, current technology is that, you used to do a hot mop, I understand, with tar. Well, now there's better polyurethane products, but there's $80,000 in the budget to redo the Civic Center roof, maintain that structure we have, but take care of some of that wear surface in the next coming year. So you'll see us come forward with that. Elevator rehab, our elevators over at the Civic Center, got $18,000 in to tune those up a little bit. They're looking a little haggard. We've done quite a bit of research to tune up, to turn IUs, but rehab them in this next current budget year. Talked about the library landscaping that's, you know, we'll assist with, make sure we do that. Didn't want to talk about in-house, we're doing quite a few improvements over at the Civic Center, just with some in-house landscaping dollars. We're doing that in-house. If we pick up more NACOG summer workers, we've got plans to do a little more work there. They've started some of those improvements, but once again, re-raking some of the gravel, planting a few trees here and there, but just cleaning things up and giving a little, freshening up some of the landscaping, so we'll see some of that go through. Likewise, as your reinvestment in the inventory of some of the infrastructure, Casa and the police department, we try to replace some of those units and get an inventory about halfway done with some of the inventory, and we'll continue to move forward next and next budget year with placing a unit or two every year and getting that more up-to-date and some of that sinking fund. Fleet, always want to mention the one or two general we have, you know, with Bruce and also Jim Crow. We were very successful last year through the ADOT Donnie Sale to pick up some very good equipment through the Donnie Sale and put that into the Public Works inventory in addition to Parks and Recreation. So they work very hard through the Donnie Sale. We don't really know what comes up. We were real successful this year. We look forward to next year being able to put some pieces into the inventory, not only for Public Works, but also Parks. Moving on, that was general fund. We can talk about some of her fund. This is the big one with streets maintenance. Think council's well aware, the half-cent sales tax maintenance program, the $2 million a year that Larry talked about before, Desmond Jerner had a real successful year in year one. We're entering into year two. We're queued up with some of the crack seal, as council saw. We will bring the chip seal contract, just closed Monday. We'll bring that to you at the end of the month and get that awarded and hit the ground running, as we talk about July 1st. We realize a great benefit there. So keep in mind, this is year two of a five-year program, right on target with what we anticipated, and we've been receiving good feedback from residents on the effort we've been given to enhance our pavement service levels, as I term them. Likewise, overlay, got $500,000 to do an overlay. We've got a few key streets. We're going to figure out which ones got the best or is the biggest need, but we'll do $500,000 in overlay, have a couple of streets proposed for that. And with streets capital improvement, we have $100,000 for a backhoe replacement for an existing inventory. So we'll move forward with getting that bid out and getting that procured. Other things in HERF noteworthy in engineering was, I think council's aware, the Sunset Lane design. We're well into that particular design with that participation and partnership with Yavapai County. Ultimately, that's about a $6 million improvement, of which we're receiving about half the funding from the Yavapai County, and of course, we'll have funding from the town. So we're cooperating with the county and moving through that design to have that ready here in a couple of budget years on the horizon as we go through the design. That will have a long lead time with some of the utility relocations, is all these big projects with tight quarters of right-of-way utility relocations in addition to getting with the residents to make sure they're satisfied with some of the temporary constructions we need to do. We've done those in the past, the Robert Road-type projects, so we're real confident we can work through that on that timeline. Other thing I wanted to mention was the, in HERF and engineering, might be noteworthy to talk about the ADOT signed replacement projects called Highway Safety Improvement Funds. That's not directly in the budget, but a very good program they will work through the Central Yavapai Met and Paulson Planning Organization. This is Phase Three. We've put about $1.2 million of signed replacements. You've seen, there's more funding this year, and we look forward to starting that program this year and continue. Most of the regulatory signs have been done. We're going to finish up any secondary-type signage and hopefully some roadway name signs that should help some of the 911-type capability and just safety of roadways when people are looking for roadway names. And likewise, there's a countywide safety study that isn't particularly in the budget, but very much the expenditure and service we can provide of a safety study, working through NACOG to look at accidents in the area and be a very large study that will look at prioritizing what particular high-impact areas are. So I'm looking forward to that study, going through that process and participating. We can identify where maybe safety dollars that come to us will be best spent for the dollar spent. Moving on to some of the bigger capital projects that Bill had mentioned earlier, the One-Thirty Cent and DIF funds. I think the most noteworthy one is the Spouse Viewpoint Intersection, which is the One-Thirty Cent Sales Tax Fund. We're really looking forward to that project. That's been a difficult design, but we're going to be able to wrap that up with the viewpoint channel. Bring forward some exhibits, but maybe council can recall that not only the intersection is paid with One-Thirty Cent Sales Tax, but flood control dollars will be used to do the Phase Three and final phase of that viewpoint channelization. So we'll send it out as one project, couple of different funding sources, but aggregately with the funding sources, it'll be about a $4.5 million project. I know Utility Department has about $400,000 of waterline replacements, so very, very lucky. large project, significant improvement, but we're really looking forward to getting that started here in the fall and building it through the fall months and sending it out and realizing good contractor bids. Likewise, this particular year is the, you know, we're finishing up a lot of improvements on Glassford. Well, this next budget year, it's going to be the viewpoint corridor. We're also going to start design on that next particular section between Manley up to Roundup. So, we're going to start design, and actually, we have in the budget that we're looking forward and have a placeholder, bought a $4 million job to get it started, we'll get it designed here in the fall, maybe in the spring be able to start a project and run it over two budget years, very similar to the Long Look Glassford project you have going on currently, funding it over two budget years. That's my last note, of course, with development impact fee funds, Glassford Long Look's going to be about half-done this budget year. Next year, you'll see us, obviously, with it rolling over the July 1st deadline, you'll see that particular project completed in time for school to be back in session around August 1st. So, that project is difficult, lots of utility relocations, it's challenging staff, which is, makes it more fun, but we feel like we're right on the timeline and addressing all the issues to put that particular improvement in place. So, pretty large project, we've got another $1.8 million of that basically $3 million project, that'll start right after the budget year. With that, that's the highlights of Public Works next year.
Any questions?
Yeah, I had a couple of questions. One was on the, and it was just, it's kind of something that strikes me as far as floodplain considerations. I know in developments, I'm thinking of my own, that when they're first developed, you know, that's a big issue, you know, it's a big priority, but as time goes on, it's less and less and less. And is that something that we're looking at when we're remapping, is that things have changed, or they require remedy, or what usually is the issues relative to identifying those floodplanes?
Well, the basin, you know, you have an initial mapping, and the amount of effort they put in with the particular technology and that they have at the time, all that's been updated. So, what you do is you get more exact, software gets better with the expenditure you do, you get a lot better data output on what that particular shape can be for the floodplain. So, to answer your question, yes, there's been changes in the past. We incorporate those when people do build close, so you incorporate some of the changes, the channelizations that are done in the past, where there's been no physical change in the field, better mapping can better identify what that particular shape model can be. So, it can be a combination of everything you mentioned.
Right, okay. Now, I'm just wondering, because just even in my own development, I see things that change, not necessarily in a dramatic way, but it does then have an impact on how, you know, water drainage and so forth impacts the development. So, just something I fear, I guess. You mentioned on the, I guess, the project we're going to do in collaboration with a county, that's going to be off about, it's going to be, what, two budget years away, you think, before that's undertaken?
Correct, we have a placeholder. We do have design funding this year to finish Sunset, so county will, it's actually a pass-through this year of the county paying the funding there, per the owner government agreement. But yes, we're anticipating in two years to get that project started, which we will start, the funding from the town will be in a couple of years. When you get the utilities in ahead of time and start those negotiations, yes, there's going to be effort right up to that particular time, but not particular expenditure of the construction dollars.
It's just hard to visualize how that's going to work, but I know you'll take care of that.
And Michael, it, Sunset should not happen at the expense of Viewpoint Drive. We've been trying to get Viewpoint Drive connected, take traffic off of Glassford Hill Road, and that's priority number one, Sunset's number two.
Okay. And the last question I had was just a signage replacement you're talking about, are we looking at, you mentioned, it sounded like maybe new signs that we don't have erected that we would be implementing as well?
Replacements.
Just replacements.
As I mentioned, we did the stop signs first, the regulatory's like the second phase, which is your speed limit signs and like. Now, you're getting into more of the specialty signs like school zones, fire district signs, some of the chevrons, and then ultimately, we'll get into some of the significant main corridors, you replace the roadway name signs. So, it is a sign replacement and upgrading that particular, they get faded when sun-baked, and the reflectivity be that much better.
I've noticed that, they look good.
And I think I brought the council over time, we'll probably, when we start the phase three, just remind council, a lot of that capital improvement of the more substantial base and concrete base rather than the friction-driven old posts, it's saved streets significant time. When you get those wet, high-wind type of winter storms and the signs start leaning, we don't have that anymore at all. We've really picked up available man-hours with the streets operations just by having a better investment. So, we really do thank ADOT net funding source through the Highway Safety Improvement Program to, you know, lessen our costs in the long run, and better safety because the signs aren't leaning. And of course, all technology is better across the board everywhere. We've talked about technology tonight and software. Technology really makes leaps and bounds even in signs, I brought some of the signs to council with the reflective mirrors and prisms they put in the 2D signs, it almost looks like you turned it on when it flashes back. Technology is really upon us in all facets of not only materials, but software.
Laura?
I have a statement and a question. The statement is, I'm so pleased we finally can fund the restoration of the interior of the elevators, they're getting embarrassing. But what I really want to know, I was in and out that week, two weeks ago, when the elevator was not functioning properly, and had a fun experience in there. So, I take it we've resolved that because that hasn't happened since.
Yeah, I wasn't aware, I must have fixed internal facilities and bring it to my attention. But yes, we do, what's important to note is this is cosmetic for the elevators, all that, this in the budget. But we do routine a couple of times a year to meet the maintenance standards, we do get it checked out by elevator professionals to make sure the safety's always there, but not a safety improvement or functionality.
We couldn't keep the door closed, and when I finally got in it, it was herky-jerky. I was so relieved to get to the second floor.
We're taking the stairs.
My real question here has to do with the conference room window. What conference room and what happened?
Nothing happened but that, the, let's talk about the windows that we've gotten, 330 is very attractive for the interactive capability. Well, the conference room on the fourth floor that we use for budget, it's a dungeon, it's got no windows. So, what they're going to do is put a window on the outside hallway, so basically, just cut into the drywall and put a see-through window. So, what that does, it makes it so much more interactive that you can see who's in there without, whoops, I didn't know what he was in, and you open the door and peek and interrupt.
I totally agree.
It's much more functional.
I hoped that it was that room, but it doesn't say, so I wasn't sure.
That be the one.
Okay.
Mary?
Norm, I just was going to say that you have a very busy department from last year and then going into this year, and of course, and there's a lot of work out there, but I will tell you, the citizens absolutely appreciate seeing their tax dollars at work. You and your department are doing a great job, and it's a wonderful town, Prescott Valley, to see the foresight needed to maintain this town and the growth.
Thank you for that comment, we'll pass that on. You know, as I commented first, not only the staff we have that's within Public Works, but it's also our partnerships, the local contracting community, they too take a personal ownership in providing that work. So, we do have it easy in that manner, is that skill they put into it and passion in doing the work, you can see it in the work they do.
Yeah, and I know when they all come in here to visit with us on different times when you're having, that they're a happy crew. I mean, they're very happy, and you know, and that's good, so they're all enjoying what they do, and thank you.
Jody?
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Norm, the study that NACOG is going to go forward with on highway safety information, has that already been advertised?
It's been awarded, and it's been started, it might be 10% done, so they're getting ramped up with some of historic data, but I do know they're going to engage us locally to say, hey, Norm, your own local police department, I want to look at your accident, I want to talk to you, Norm, where have you seen that, you know, the accidents, or where you see needs? So, yes, it's been awarded, and I think, yes, we anticipate next eight or nine months getting that deliverable.
Okay, in order for us to be able to be eligible for the highway safety funds coming forward for reducing fatalities, correct?
Correct.
Good, thank you.
Looks like we're done.
Thank you for your time this evening.
Thank you, Norm. Welcome back, Bill.
Thank you, I'm glad to be back. Forgot my budget books, I have to go back. This presentation will be slightly quicker than my first one that I made, slightly quicker.
Not the slightly.
By about 35 minutes, it'll be that much. So, just a couple of points, I just want to make, my budget overall increased very little over the previous year, but before I start, I really want to mention that I'm very fortunate to have three very good managers who work for me, that they prepare their own budgets, they review their budgets closely. So, you know, Katie and Mark and Casey, they do a great job overseeing and administering their budget. And then, the person who really deserves most of the credit as it relates to management services, budget and monitoring is Lee. Well, you know, she just cracks the whip and keeps us in check, so you know, my part's pretty easy, I got a bunch of good people who work for me, so, but with that said, I'm just, I'll start with personnel. You can see there's no change in our staffing, we're not requesting any new positions, but we are making requests for two reclassifications. There's an administrative aide down in the utility area, we are going to, proposing that we upgrade that to the customer account reps, so they're all the same category, so we can kind of move them around a little bit easier, a little bit more flexibility for Mark in managing his staff. The other one is in finance, we have two current, currently, we have two accountants. We are going to create a senior accountant, have a more higher-level position within the department to do more, you know, higher-level types of work. So, we are looking at those two type of position changes. It is incorporated currently into the budget, in our salary budget, so all of that has been taken care of. Operating, it went up by 2.8%, and again, we were at 2%, and then Larry made a change, wanted me to make a change to the budget, so I'm at 2.8% now. I was, I held the line, I held the line on my budget, but no, Larry said I had to do this change, so now I'm at 2.8%. And I couldn't tell.
I bought that for the first five years.
Yeah, see, and I couldn't say no.
The intent was he'd cut someplace else to make up for that, but no.
No, but he added it to my budget, and I couldn't tell the boss no. So, I just have to, just to face the punishment up here, saying that I'm over it by 0.8 of 1%. So, again, the areas where we've increased is in utilities. There were some items that were previously budgeted in Neil's budget. Basically, it's our lockbox where we take in utility payments. For some reason, originally, we kind of did this contracted service, and it kind of got rolled in his budget, but we felt it was more appropriate to put it into the utility budget, my budget. So, that's why you'll see utility budget going up. Now, what Casey did, he wants this computer IT item, and in order to basically receive that item, he cut in his, he cut some laptops, replacement PCs. He budgets a lot of money, every year, we have a bunch of PCs either breaking or just going, you know, they're outdated, so we go ahead and replace it. We've been replacing PCs pretty well for the last five years now, so we kind of lowered that budget this year. And then, in addition, we also have our new phone system that's throughout the town. He always buys replacement phones, so he cut that budget too, so, just so that he can get this virtual server. So, we said, okay, so, right now, that's where the offset in between operating and capital. Now, that's pretty much a highlight of the, my department. Casey's not here, and I've tried to look up what a virtual server actually is, and the definition of a virtual server is something that I couldn't even try to even explain at this point after I read the definition. So, when me and Casey, or me and Larry were going over to the capital request, we looked at it, and we weren't sure exactly, so we called Casey in, he explained it to us, and as soon as he left, we go, I'm still not sure what it is, but it's supposed to be very practical, it's supposed to be newer technology, it's supposed to be, right now, we buy a lot of the actual servers that sit on a, in a rack in his IT area. These virtuals are supposed to give him a lot more flexibility as it relates to adding additional servers in the future. It's a web hosting type of addition, it helps with software. That's it, that's the extent of my IT knowledge.
Have you ever heard the term "stop digging"?
Yeah, I know, yeah.
You're there.
All right, okay, thank you, thank you. Are there any questions?
If he ever comes after you and uses the term 3D, say no.
Okay, oh, got it. So, with that, I'll try to answer any questions.
Questions? Hearing none.
Hearing none.
Good, thank you.
Diane.
Thank you, Bill.
Thank you, thank you, Vice Mayor.
Oh, she just taped Bill off there. Okay, ladies and gentlemen, my stuff starts on page 627, that's the beginning of it, but I'm, this is going to be a very short presentation for all of you. All I have to say really is, hey, you know what, we're not spending $410,768 this year, we're only spending $67,980.
No election.
I reduced my budget by $350,000 over the past year, what do you think about that?
No election.
That's all I need to say.
You get all the cookies, that's just, that's all.
That's it, thank you, I'm done.
Wait a minute, she wanted to add her 2% on last year's numbers, like, no, you have no election this year.
Okay.
Good job.
All right, me, I tried, you know, all right, seriously. As I just said, we did, we did have a huge expense last year budgeted, but we were very, very pleasantly surprised when we found out that, given the number of municipalities participating in that same election cycle that we were and sharing that expense, we only had to pay $97,000 as opposed to $350,000. So, that was great, and we had a successful election besides. We were all elected in the primary, you know, that was, that was great. And we also, that was our biggest celebration for our first brand-new step into a new fall election cycle, which we had never done before with all of those legislative changes that our legislators blessed us with. And on top of that, our voter registration went up by an additional 3,600, I would like to say 36,000 people, but 3,600 people. And that's a huge step for us, we haven't seen a huge increase like that in a number of years. And also, just so most of you know as well, and I was pleasantly surprised to find out that 80% of all of our registered voters are now on the permanent early voting list. That helps our, that helps our voter participation tremendously, and I hope it keeps increasing, and we'll do everything we can to keep that voter outreach going to keep people educated about that. Also, during that election, we had one of our highest participation levels, normally we're in the 30% to 40% level. With the advent of the general election would hit over 80% participation, our average for the election cycle itself came out to be about 58.4%, which is great for us, really great, I hope to keep that going. Anyway, as I said, our budget this year for the town clerk's operations is only $67,980. Unbelievable, isn't it, Jody? I know, it is. But with that, we're already underway to increase our customer service. We have plans to implement a business license software program that allows our current business license owners to go ahead and renew online with a debit card or credit card. And one thing that we have already done is install a credit card machine in our office, which we have not had access to for any time. We've had to run down to form Utilities Division under Bill to use their credit card machine, so it was kind of an inconvenience for our customers to say, I'm sorry, you have to go down to accounting to pay that bill. We have it in our office, and people love it. We're already averaging several users in a week, and we've only had three weeks, we're, you know, like 12 and We're, you know, like 12 and a half a day. We're doing good, people love that. So, in the town clerk's personnel, what our expectations are, goals for this year would be, first thing is a priority for us, is refresh our existing training PowerPoints for the Laserfish system. We want to get our new hires and give refreshers a whole new look at the new instructions that we just got uploaded this year. So it's going to be some refresher and retrain time for, for our folks out there. Also, we're going to hope that that will also encourage more use in the Laserfish system by the departments and the people in the departments. Some folks just don't get it, some people don't want to play electronics, but we're going to try and do everything we can to encourage them to participate in, because it's going to be a big benefit to the customers out there, not only in the community, but internally. People don't understand the, the powerfulness of this system when they're trying to find something. They want to document, it's just as easy to look it up on Laserfish and bang, there it is, as opposed to not. So we're going to do that, and then on the risk management area, I have been approved for a part-time person, thank you Larry, and council, I hope you approve it as well, which is going to open up a whole new wondrous experience for our office in, in the management of, of risk and safety trainings and loss control, and all of that in an effort to, to reduce the employee injuries out there and maybe even some property loss. So, our, our proposed budget amounts reflect to one new line item, and that's for banking services, and that's for the credit card machine in the amount of $1,980. And we have a few additional dollars in maintenance fees, which are going to continuously go up on software, we know that's inevitable, it's the way of life, as we've all discussed this evening. So, other than that, my budget amounts are pretty much what they've been in the past, no great, no great rises or decreases, anyway, I just kind of move a couple dollars around here and there to accommodate where I needed it to go. Have you got any questions about it anywhere in there?
I was just going to ask, when you're recruiting your half, half-time person?
When are we recruiting? After July 1st.
Pretty quick.
I'm, I'm very pleased about that. It's going to be a huge help to us, thank you.
Anyone else? Hearing none, thank you Diane.
You're welcome.
And with that, the meeting is adjourned.